Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council for this August 19, 2019. It's after 7:30 p.m. I hope everyone had a good hiatus and it was nice that we didn't have any emergency measures that interrupted our little six-week vacation from council meetings. But I think we'll be ready to roll tonight and we'll be going into the fall because that's budgetary time and that's always a busy time. Now, because of Labor Day holiday, the next meeting will be Tuesday, September 6, 2019, I believe, if I looked at my calendar right. And if not, then it's whatever that day is after Labor Day. If you would please, Mr. Paulo, call the roll.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bostancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
And Ms. Warden.
Here.
And we're all here, so we do have a quorum. The only change to the agenda will be, in addition to the property purchase, we will have a brief discussion on pending litigation. So that will be added to the agenda. And the agenda other than that, in terms of the legislation, will remain as presented. And I think everyone got maybe Mr. Paulo's updated resolution with regard to the funding for the transportation program. So I think that takes care of the initial housekeeping matters. And at this time, I would ask you to stand and join the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This seems like a lifetime ago, but I will entertain a motion for approving the minutes of the July 1, 2019 council meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Silvestri, second by Mr. Myers. All in favor of approving the minutes of July 1, 2019? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of July 1 are approved. Welcome, Mayor, long time no see. Good to see you here.
Thank you.
Hope you enjoyed your way from council, but now back in the trenches.
I did miss you folks, but I'll tell you, it was awful nice to have a few weeks' absence away, too. It gives everybody a chance to unwind and enjoy life a little bit. So, but good to be back. Welcome back, council. Nice to have you guys and ladies here to help make our decisions for our city. Just a couple of things to bring you up to speed on. Things tend to slow down a little bit throughout the summer. Everybody's doing vacations and stuff. But we did have two new businesses that opened here in Worcester within the last few weeks, actually. Mark's Grocery opened up on Portage in the old Kmart building, and it's a very nice facility. If you haven't gotten a chance to check it out, it really is a marvelous redo of that building. And then Hobby Lobby just had their grand opening today up there where Elder Beerman used to be, up in the Walmart Plaza up there. So again, a very nice building, a lot of excitement in the community to have both of those stores here. Our city services were busy over the summer, especially our paving. We paved about 58 streets throughout our city this summer at a cost of about $2.4 million, which is about 10% of our general fund budget. And so we've had lots and lots of paving. And I've actually had a couple of comments from the community saying that they're amazed how well our streets are starting to look. And so it is, it is starting to get noticed. Hopefully, you're getting those same kind of comments, so, but that's nice to hear. And then our parks, of course, have been busy places this summer. And the pools, actually, last year was our largest usage of our swimming pools and water facilities. Our numbers aren't all accumulated yet as far as usage, but in number-wise, as far as income, we're within 95% of where we were last year. So we're expecting another very strong year again with our pools. So that's great to have showing for our city. We held our city employee picnic, our recognition picnic that we do each summer up at the Freelander Chalet this year. So really, it was an enjoyable thing to utilize that building that our team worked so hard to get back into useful life. And it is a beautiful facility. I'm hoping that all of you've gotten a chance to get through it at one point or another since we have gotten it fixed up. And lastly, I'll leave it with, things are moving on the old Horns Nursing Home facility just off of the square, on the north side of the square. Worcester Growth, our community improvement corporation here for the city, and the Wayne County CIC went together to purchase that building. And we are moving forward. We have demolition plans in place. That should start here early this fall. We have to do abatements of some asbestos that is in the building. That'll happen first. But really, within probably the next month or so, you'll start seeing movement to get that to a level site. And we had people interested in putting in a proposal for reuse of that property. And those are due, I think, August 30th, am I correct on that, Joel? So August 30th, we'll have a time where hopefully we'll get a lot of different varied proposals and we'll see what might be the best fit for our downtown and for the city as a whole. With that, we're here to serve you and help in any questions on the agenda in front of you. So nice to have you back.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one petition. It's a petition for a liquor license. And to be transparent, the company, I briefly handled a small matter for them. I have no vote in this, but I just thought I'd point that out. And this is the second time it's been before us, so, and I pointed it out then, too. So if you would please read the petition there, Mr. Paulo.
A petition from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for Ragusi, Inc., doing business as Sunoco Mart at 209 Bell Avenue, Worcester, Ohio 44691. They are asking for a Class B, no, a Class C-2 permit.
And that's a carryout permit? No on-premises consumption? As you probably all are tired of hearing me, you know, we have three options. There's one to request a hearing here in the county seat, or request a hearing down in Columbus on this, or we can waive having a hearing. What's your pleasure, council?
Motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive hearing?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
So we'll waive hearing? And if I ask you nicely, would you let the Department of Liquor Control? No, we waive the hearing.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Paulo. Committee reports? I don't think, if there was a committee meeting during the hiatus, I missed it. And I don't see any public hearings listed. And we have no unfinished business, so that brings us directly to new business, which is the first reading of Resolution Number 2019 hyphen 39. It is slated for three readings unless the rules are suspended. If you would please, Mr. Paulo, after a long absence, read the title.
Resolution Number 2019 dash 39. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for annual bridge inspections within the city of Worcester and declaring an emergency.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Bostancic, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is pretty straightforward. We're coming to an end of a three-year period where the ODOT would inspect five bridges within the city of Worcester at no charge to the city. And what this is, is to extend this agreement for another three years. Just as an FYI, the five bridges are the following: located on Palmer Street over the railroad, the North Street and Laurel Street over Christmas Run Creek, the Culverson or Sabolt, and the bridge at the Christmas Run Park. They have completed the third year of the inspections, and we are due to extend this if we so wish. The alternative is to do what we had done in the past, where we did the inspections ourselves. And in the past, it was estimated that the engineering department spent approximately 100 man-hours a year performing inspections and filling out paperwork and also attending classes. So this is a pretty good deal. Any questions?
Free is always my favorite price.
It's the only thing we're going to do tonight that's free.
So yeah.
Yes, I'm going to do just the third and final.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
I look to you again, Mr. Bostancic.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Silvestri. Any questions or comments or?
Yes.
Mr. Kobelarsik's been silent for six weeks. Do you want to put him on toes to the fire?
Yeah.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes. Should they find any, anything out of the way, any aberrations? Who bears that cost? Is it ours? I mean, does ODOT have any stake in that? Do they give any grant money? Or do we bear total cost of whatever their recommendation may be? And are we compelled to do it?
Yeah, it's our responsibility. I mean, two of them are brand-new within the last five or six years. So I think we're in pretty good shape.
So we're not anticipating any costs?
No.
Okay.
I would imagine the biggest boogeyman out there is that bridge over the railroad on Palmer Street?
No, that's Andrew.
Roger, when did we stop doing our own inspections?
Three years ago.
So this is just the very first contract that we're going through?
Correct. This is the second time they've come around with the program.
And are you happy with the terms so far? Good.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 2019 dash 39 passes. Brings us to Resolution Number 2019 dash 40. It'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri. And this is a budgeted item. So would you please read the title, Mr. Paulo?
Resolution Number 2019 dash 40. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the replacement and construction of existing and new storm sewers and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have before us with this particular piece of legislation this evening is a replacement and an upgrade to our storm sewer on two different city streets. For a point of reference, if you were to come south on Market Street, you'd pass Worcester Glass on your right-hand side. I'm told there's a Market Street Church of God in there, and then the Salvation Army. And just after that, after you would have gone right on Spruce Street, there's a little Ohio Street with dead ends to the west. So there's a cul-de-sac there that runs all the way west to Walnut and then continues in cul-de-sacs there. So the storm sewer is going to be along Ohio Street. It's actually going to go through the field where there's no vehicle access and then connect with, it's called Chestnut Court there to the west. So we have a metal corrugated pipe there that's ready to fail. There's going to be a few, a couple additional catch basins along Ohio Street, and then 125 linear feet of deteriorated 36-inch corrugated pipe there on Chestnut. We're going to replace that with PVC pipe. So as I said, not just a replacement, but also an upgrade. And there's going to be six new catch basins and two new storm sewer manholes there. I do want to thank Roger and his staff for doing all the design, construction, administration, and inspection as part of his duties with his staff in his office. So that does save the city money, and we don't have to contract those services out as part of the project. This will come exclusively, as I may have said, out of the storm sewer fund, not out of the general fund. And like I said, we do not have to let this go to three readings. It is part of the budget that this body already passed for this year. So with that, I would move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any other questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019, 2019 hyphen 40 passes.
I'll turn our attention to Resolution Number 2019 hyphen 41. It'll be presented by Mr. Bostancic. This, too, is budgeted and will not require suspension of the rules. That does require Ms. Paulo, if she would be so kind, to read the title.
Resolution Number 2019 dash 41. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a bike path and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bostancic, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, as we just said, this is going to give the administration the ability to advertise for bids and to accept a contract with the best bidder for a portion of a bike path. And I'll read, this is just a continuation of our long-term project to do a bike loop through the city and connect it to various other bike paths that it will extend to some other parts of Wayne County as well. So this is just a portion of it, and we've already passed the money. And this is just a requirement to, this is just a piece of legislation to authorize the bid. And this part of this bike path, I'm just going to read a description and give everybody an idea of where we're at here. It's a construction of bike path along the south side of Oldman Road, from the drive to Oldman Road Water Tank to Burbank Road, along the west side of Burbank Road from Oldman Road to Friendsville Road, along the west side of Friendsville Road to Milltown Road, and along the east side of Friendsville Road to Health Point Trail. And additionally, the trail will also run on the north side of Portage Road from Melrose Drive to Light at Marx, and then along the south side of Portage Road to the trails along State Route 585. If you can follow that, it's be a lot easier to look at a map, but I just want to give everybody the idea where it was. And again, all the construction and engineering, construction plans and engineering will be done by the engineering department. The total cost will be $855,500. I'm sorry, $855,000. ODOT's picking up $717,500, and the city's cost will end up being $137,500. So the bulk of this is coming from the state. So, any questions?
I just have a comment. I don't know if you all read one of those things we get through the email. I had an article on that cities with bike trails tend to have more of economic sustenance because it provides yet another way of people being able to get to and from work. So, you know, despite the fact that we have to spend fairly nominal sum compared to what the state's providing, it does have benefits beyond just health and fitness, so.
Yes, Mr. Kobelarsik, when did you anticipate sending the requests out for proposals?
Well, the plans are done. I just sent those to ODOT. So as soon as I get approval from ODOT, we'll advertise.
Okay, so soon?
Soon, yeah, yeah, I'm hoping.
I just didn't know whether or not we needed to waive the rules for emergency in order to be able to do this within 30 days. No, the timing. Yeah, I know it's budgeted, but if it was going to take place within the next 30 days, because this legislation, in order to have it take effect immediately, we'd have to just waive the rules, is all. And I just wanted to make sure we didn't interfere with your timing.
Yes, thank you. Roger, as I reviewed the plans, one question that had come up, on the south side of Oldman, there is sidewalk there between the water tank and Burbank, correct? Is there going to be any way to salvage what's there?
No, that'll be removed.
Just be removed and replaced with asphalt?
Yeah, Roger, is this expected to take place this year, this calendar year, or will this take place next year? If the...
More than likely, I think, next year.
Okay.
I just want to get, the earlier I can bid it out, I get a better price, and the construct, the completion date will be like next July. So they may do some of it this year if somebody, you know, needs some work towards the end of the year.
Okay.
But I expect most of it next year.
Seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Do we have a motion?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I ahead of myself.
We could have a motion first.
I would like to make a motion to adopt.
All right, motion to adopt. I got ahead of myself. Usually, we have discussion after the motion to adopt, so I was in that. So motion to adopt by Mr. Bostancic, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Anyone else? Okay, would you now please call the roll on the...
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019 hyphen 41 passes. Brings us to the last piece of legislation for the evening, which is Resolution Number 2019 hyphen 42. It will be presented by Mr. Myers. It is slated for three readings. Would you please call, or would you please read the title, Mr. Paulo?
You're a little rusty today.
I wonder why? Six weeks off.
Resolution Number 2019 dash 42. A resolution authorizing additional funds for the transportation program.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I'm going to introduce Jeff Baddick here momentarily, but this is my only opportunity to announce a committee meeting I'd like to have before we go into executive session because most people might be leave. So I would like to announce a committee meeting on September 3 at 6:30 for a conversation about the Buckeye Street neighborhood and its success of that neighborhood organizing and getting some of the things done in the community. David Griffith will be here, as well as some of the other neighbors, to discuss what they've done and talk with us about how we might be able to do similar programs in other parts of the city. So that'll be September 3 at 6:30. Moving on to the resolution at hand, this is a very exciting program. It's growing obviously substantially, and that's why we're coming to council this evening. I'm going to let Jeff Baddick tell more about it. They work with this every day. There's a number of people here to speak to this issue. I get updated from time to time, but I'm going to let the professionals talk about this this evening. So, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Myers. I'd like to welcome Asha Hirschberg back, 12 weeks in turn to leave. It's nice to have her back. We also have in attendance Eric Schwarzen Trooper from Worcester Transit, Leslie Bous, and Don Ockerman from Community Action. They're the experts. A couple of things I'd like to say before we turn it over for questions. In June, Leslie called me and invited me to ride the Blue Loop on Worcester Transit. I said, "Perfect." We picked it up at the Y. We rode it for an hour. I was very impressed. We had three individuals that got on the bus. One of them got off at Gojo to work, another one at Artiflex, and another one we dropped off at the north end at Walmart to go, he was, I think, a busboy at Applebee's. So it's working. People are using it to get to work. Very impressive, it was on time. If you have a chance sometime, I would recommend that you ride the bus. It's a very good service. If we could have looked into the future last year when we were doing the budget, which was 301,000, I don't even know if you guys would have approved it if we just said, "Yeah, I think we need 250 more thousand because we think it's going to, you know, the ridership is going to increase." But it has really ballooned. I don't know where it's going to end. It has to end sometime. Our population is about 27,000, so I would think it's going to level off at some point. And we think we're getting close to that. With that, the experts are here to answer any questions. Open the floor.
Thank you. Leslie?
Thank you, David, for those nice words. And what I would like to do is I would like to have some people who use the program just come up here briefly and talk about their experience and what it means to them. Part of that, we did just a quick survey of people on the bus. They're pretty much...
Yeah.
Well, I'll just talk really loud. So we just did a real quick survey of people who just rode the Transit and asked them to write just a little bit about their experience. So I just wanted to read a few of those people we searched our folks. We had Jacqueline Mullins Bartlett. She wrote, "I take the bus to work. It's been a pleasant and friendly experience, too. It really does help a lot to get around when I need to get to work." So that's somebody there. We have B. Morrison. "It has provided me transportation to expand my search for employment, and it is appreciated." James Blankenship. "Having two routes has made it a lot easier getting to and from work on time." Finally, we have Todd Ingles. "I don't drive, so it's needed to go to work. It's really nice, and I always get to work on time. The bus driver is great to have." So that's just, you know, real quick input from here. So I would like to invite Mr. David Drum up here to speak about his experience. And then I will also have R.C. Phillips, who uses the bus and system on a regular basis.
As you heard, my name is David Drum. I've been a resident of Worcester for over 50 years. Our kids have grown up here, and it sounds like it's a great place. However, I've experienced some setbacks recently. And when I was living up in a valley city address until October, this was, came back to Worcester happily, and discovered that this program... Oh, okay. Discovered that, whoops, program existed where I could get these passes and call. Happily, there are vans available, and because of my situation, it makes it a lot easier. I was still driving when I came back here, but I decided because of the drop foot and everything else that I should not drive. So this has been a godsend for me. I've used it and used it and used it. And I can't say enough about it because everybody has been very helpful, very kind, and made it much easier and made it a pleasant trip each time that I've gone on it. So I, it's important, I think, very, particularly for people who have no transportation or are limited now. So I think that's... Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dave.
And welcome back to Worcester.
Yo, thank you. I'm glad to be here, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first off, I wasn't hard to find because I talked to the drivers a lot, and I praised the fact that the transit was available to me frequently. I am so very grateful. I live in a community that provides a transit system. I have used it to shop. I have used it to go to medical appointments. I have used it to apply to jobs. I have used it to get to my job and to get home. It has made the difference in hope for a fruitful life for me. life for me and facing destitution. It has been very, very important. I am so grateful that you guys have provided it for me. I can't say enough about it. That is why I was so easy to find on the bus system. I was there this morning at Hobby Lobby. I was, I am one of the temporary employees. I got there by the Transit this morning. I came home by the Transit this afternoon. It is, it is really important for people who don't have transportation. It's easy to forget or not to understand what it's like not to have a vehicle, and the things that you take for granted doing by having a vehicle. So, you know, I really hope you guys just, you know, hang in there with this. It's important to a lot of people. It's definitely important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, they said, more than anything I could say, I'll just want to add that it's an honor and a privilege to get to help be part of this system and to help serve the people of this community in such a meaningful way. Not everybody gets to have a job where they can do that, so I'm very fortunate to have it. And I want to thank you for all believing in this system and for making it happen. I think it's one of the things that makes Worcester one of those stellar communities that, you know, people wish they had. So I can't say anymore. So do you have questions for me or any of my charming panel of people from Community Action? Yes?
Thanks, Leslie. I'd like to, and thank you all for coming and speaking. I grew up here in Worcester, and I remember taking the, excuse me, the city bus to the local parks and pools as a kid. And when the city transportation, the city bus program ended, I must have been in, I don't know, we'll say the mid-'90s. I remember that was detrimental to a large population. Maybe 10 years ago, there was a movement by some of the council members. I remember John Albright was a part of that. I participated in some of those conversations, but we tried to get public transportation back in Worcester, and there just wasn't, there wasn't the support. And so I'm really happy that we have that now and that you all are able to take advantage of that. And I see a lot of people being picked up around, you know, and dropped off around the community. So it's obviously working, so keep it up. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from council? John?
Yes, thank you, the riders, for the compelling stories and insights into the service being received by Worcester Transit. In the past, Leslie and Eric, we've seen rider statistics in terms of where we were the first year. We see the route expansions. Might it be possible just to see the increased ridership activity associated with the route expansions and so forth? It's just, you know, from a fiduciary point of view, we're talking about large sums of money, and it's an invaluable program. That's not coming into question. However, for council's reference and on behalf of the Finance Committee, it would be nice to see the quantitative increase in the route expansion and the ridership growth associated with this valuable public service. So I would request that. I know you have those statistics because you track that, you know, the miles served the prior year versus the miles served this year with the route expansion. Those are easy statistics to derive out of the database. And Jeff, I'm sure you receive those or see that information also. So that would be my only comment. The humanistic side, there is no question about the value of the program from the riders that we've heard from this evening. But again, from a statistical, I'm a business kind of guy. I like to see how that investment is generating a valued return for the citizens of Worcester.
Mr. Ansel? We have most of that information in our packet, and I'm not sure if you've received it. Did you get...
It's not a part of the electronic packet here, though.
No.
Could she share that, yeah, can she share that this evening very quickly?
Do you want to highlight some of the...
For the public, talking about the growth, just the top-level numbers.
Okay. Well, from, just from, from six months from last year, in that six-month period to this year, I will say that the growth of the use of the program's grown by 175%. So in, from January to June 2018, with the bus service, that same period, we served 7,182 people. From January to June this year, we, well, rides, this year, we provided 19,816 rides in that same period.
So it's nearly tripled.
Mm-hmm. And then with the rest of the program, with the passes, in 2018, from January to June, 8,877 passes were used for non-work trips, and 2,855 passes were used for work trips. In that same timeframe, in 2019, for the non-work trips, 14,173 passes were used, and 3,112 work slash education passes were used.
Thank you for sharing that information for the people that watch this on TV. That's very, very substantial increases on ridership. So, well done.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Yep.
Yes. Very valuable service provided. Has anyone reached out to any of the corporations that are using the service through their employees to maybe come up with some passes for their employees? I mean, has anyone reached out to quiz them? It seems like it's a very valuable tool, and it's helping them as well. I mean, it's all public buy-in at this point. Is there any sponsorships, any passes, company passes that anyone's talking about?
We actually discussed that, if we could get together periodically, discuss the program. One of the items we discussed doing this coming year is to potentially approach some people that might be able to sponsor that. And in approach, you know, the county, a lot of these types of programs are running in other places, even five counties where some of these people live in Worcester. We do subsidize from very short distance, people that live here just outside, but there's a bigger population I think that they can serve and partnership opportunities.
And we're developing that base right now, and with the exponential growth, Mr. Kevin, that's a great idea. I met with the general manager of an international company. He said that you were having dialogue and working about assisting him. He's a little further out on the west side of town, and there would be interest on their behalf to subsidize that for some of their in-town workers that might have a stop on Worcester Transit in the mornings and in the evenings, getting workers from the downtown area that don't have cars to the far west side of town. So, very good point.
Sure. Thank you.
And just, just to add on to that, Community Action, we're actually pursuing two grants right now that are based on work transportation. We're applying for the Paradox Prize, and then we're also looking at applying for Wayne County Community Foundation grant to do just that very thing, to work with employers, to possibly either pay for some of the costs of the passes, or to, at least to get their employees to the point where then they can pay for their passes themselves. We're also looking at how we can expand that countywide to get those people from other places to come here. And we're looking at working with a few employers and with some staffing agencies here in Worcester, as well as with the Wayne County Schools Career Center, and possibly JFS and possibly Goodwill. You know, anybody who's looking at trying to get people to work, because that's what we're hearing over and over again, is how important it is for people to get to work and how can we help it. And, you know, and honestly, we hold up your program as the perfect model. It's like, this is what's worked in Worcester. Now, how can we make that, you know, expand that out and help? And then also, we work with a lot of agencies that are buying passes and giving them to their clients. So that's been a step. And then we've also been working with the court system to have them buy passes and have them contract some transportation. So again, they can get those people who are trying to get their life back together and on track, to help them, you know, keep going to those meetings and all that, the stuff they need to get to, so they can become, you know, good contributing citizens again.
Right, right. That very valuable aspect of that as well, and I would not pretend to take away from that. I think that's the most important function, but thank you.
President Biden-Dyke?
Yeah, not to diminish everything that's been said, but I would like to recognize Mr. Schwarzen Trooper of Worcester Transit. Without him, we'd have no program, because it's not, just don't want to give people the wrong idea. This isn't a City of Worcester program. Without him investing his capital, his sweat equity, and investing in the city of Worcester because he believed he could provide not only a service, but one that was viable, we wouldn't be here talking tonight. And it is a marvelous synergy between public and private, and it shows that it can work. And lastly, we had talked about, you know, improving our program when we did the income tax increase, and I'm glad that our program's been successful. And because of the income tax increase, we have the funds available to help further the expansion of it. But thank you very much, Mr. Schwarzen Trooper, for investing in our city, because it's people like you that make this a wonderful place to live, as Mr. Drum had pointed out.
Can I make one more highlight to Mr. Biden-Dyke's reference? You're also to be complimented on your capitalization on equipment. You're buying the right equipment. It's very well-maintained equipment. It's not new equipment, but you're managing your expenses. You're maintaining the smaller vans, as well as the airport shuttle and the full-size bus now that's running around Worcester. It's remarkable. And I've seen the equipment, and I take a focus on cleanliness and compliance and those, safety of the equipment, and it's very, very nicely maintained equipment. And it's functional. It's all short mileage, so it doesn't have to be extremely robust and new. And you're managing your expenses very effectively to provide this service. So, yeah, great vision and great management.
Thank you. Mr. Bastancik?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Leslie, how many people actually, what's the percentage of people who say that, I think, what is it, if you don't have a pass, it's about $4 charge? Is that correct?
If you are the general public that's riding...
Yeah, just the general public, yeah.
Yeah, the general public, that charge is $2.
Oh, $2. Oh, that's right, I remember.
Right. And, and the reason for that is it allows people who are stepping off of the pass program to be able to afford to buy their passes on their own, because if they were paying, paying the $4, they, you know, it would, it would put them backwards. It would be a step backwards. And what Mr. Schwarzen Trooper has seen over and over again is there are people who are still eligible for the program and still in the program, but now that they're working, they now have the money to pay for their own passes on the bus. So they're actually saving the city money, because they're not using the pass program anymore. They're paying, paying their way. And they're also able to help somebody who gets on the bus and maybe doesn't have, have the money to ride the bus, and they can now actually help them ride the bus as well. So it's sort of addressing that, that benefits cliff that a lot of people see when they're trying to get self-sufficient and get out of poverty. It's just another one of those steps that allows them to take control and, you know, pay their own way on the bus.
I understood. We talked earlier about this, at another point. So the $4 is what it costs the company to make a profit if they wanted to charge per ride, like the $4?
Yeah, that's...
That would be what, what it would be for, if we didn't have a subsidized pass or...
Well, that's a, that's an Eric question. Would you like to come up here and answer that?
Absolutely.
Can you say that, yeah, I've got most of it, but...
Oh, the question was, if there was no subsidized pass, I'm just curious, what would be the amount you would have to charge a rider to, to make a profit and, to make a fair profit?
We would have to charge four across the board. The $2 step down really amounts to between 2 and 3% of the total. I really believe we could make that a dollar, and it's not going to affect much at all. We can make it $5, and it would probably disappear. You know, so it's kind of that step off is really what we're targeting, as Leslie said, to try and get someone to take that leap and then to, one more step towards independence is a critical factor. Most of the people that stay in that range have a tendency to go with the pass that they're purchasing for three to six months, and then they stop riding, because they've got a transportation typically. But, you know, there are a lot more, even people that are staying on, that are just choosing not to go back into a transportation provide, doing it for themselves. They tend to, there are some that will just indefinitely use the, you know, the cash option. But $4 would be across the board.
So it cost me $4 to ride the bus?
Yes. Well, as the, if you're the paying public, it's two, so that we have that step down, so that we can allow that to be more attainable for the public.
And do the, do the drivers take cash? Or do you have, okay.
On the bus.
I went to ride, as Mr. Baddick suggested, I would have to find a pass first to be able to get on the bus.
Yeah, they'll take $2 at the bus.
Okay. Thank you.
I understand that there, there was an app in the works. What's the status of that?
Yeah, that's complete. And the app, of course, demonstrates all of our services, but it also really focuses on the city route. The things that it does that are really important are it allows tracking. Tracking's a big element, because if someone's using it in the wintertime, the weather's, even if it's just a hot day, they can track it. They can see within 60 seconds of where it's at. And then, both buses, that's accurate. So then they can go to the stop. They can, you know, come outside of an air-conditioned place or a heated place, depending on what the weather is, and it really makes it user-friendly. It's also a way for us to communicate with riders, so that if there is a traffic delay, a weather delay, or any variety of things, if it gets beyond 10 minutes, so if it's 11 minutes or more, we'll send a push notification out to let everyone know that, hey, you know, the Gold Bless is 12 minutes behind. So it gives us a good way to communicate. And it's just those things that, what we've seen is work employment, people are using it for work employment. Dependability and punctuality, of course, are critical. There's no, you know, we can't be 15 minutes late, and, you know, someone's late for work, and then it just ruins the whole scenario. So that's why that communication factor is good. We've actually had a couple of instances where we sent a push notification out, someone called us in a panic, because, you know, they're going to be late for work, so we sent another vehicle out and got them. And it's an isolated incident. We don't do that all the time, certainly. But, you know, it's that level of communication which increases the rider satisfaction, which then increases usership. And just kind of a synergistic effect that really, it's taken us a while to realize that, but I think we're starting to realize that. I can't speak to the rest of the program, but I really think with the city bus on two routes, we're probably in the 85% of where we'll end up at the end of the process of growth. So it's not a hockey sick growth like it was in the beginning. I think it'll be much more slow and gradual. There may be some increases, but I think that really the feeling is that's about where that settles out. It's not, nothing about the rest of the program, just the city route.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Has anyone, any additional comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor Brenneman?
Mr. Biden-Dyke and other council members were absolutely correct in saying what Eric Schwarzen Trooper has brought to this program, because he has brought a quality of service that was lacking before. So that has been a critical component. But the other critical component for us is Community Action, because that organization has done such a super job of organizing the taxi passes or the bus passes and, and gives us a conduit to utilize to help subsidize these and know they're going, it's going to the right places. So, it's been a great partnership, and I can't leave out our own team. Our rec team puts together the transportation information and monitors the whole program. So Ashley and Jeff have been very instrumental, and Joel has been very instrumental in bringing this whole thing together. But it's really a great relationship and a great partnership. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood all that goes into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Seeing no further comments. By the way, thanks, everybody, for coming this evening and for all the positive comments. Usually, we don't talk about things this long unless there's controversy or some dissenting vote, but this has all been very positive, and I'm grateful for all my fellow council members, as well as the folks that came this evening. I recall that discussing this about five years ago, I think, when Ashley brought to my attention that program wasn't functioning properly. Our distinguished former colleague, Mr. Albright, was proud that we authorized $150,000 to support it. And when it was brought to our attention, that we were only spending about $17,000 of that. And if you think about that five years ago... And if you think about that, five years ago, that was a $17,000 program, which is now going to be well over half a million dollars. So I'd say the growth is quite, quite significant and I think it's serving a wonderful need in our community. And we'll thank everybody that's been involved over the last number of years. Yes, sir?
Yeah, just a quick, I think we also have to realize what it would cost the city to try to duplicate this program.
I don't even want to think about it. It would cost.
I think we're getting a bargain here.
Yes, this is a.
For the needed, for the needed.
Well, what it's able to provide for our community for workforce development and getting people to, to and from work is, is pretty phenomenal, so. Without further ado, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules this evening.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bostancic. Would you please call the rule on the suspension of the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
The rules are suspended?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Any further discussion, questions? I'll just point out, this is something we also get a return on our money because if people are going to work and are employed, we get the income tax from them. So again, a form of synergy, so marvelous program. Seeing none, would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Awesome.
Resolution number 2019 hyphen 42 passes. Thank you, one and all.
Thank you guys so much.
And I hope we have continued success and people realize that this is yet another gem that the City of Worcester offers that a lot of places bigger than us can't do and a lot of places our size can't do. So it just shows what happens when you put great minds together.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay. That concludes our legislative portion. We do have two items slated for executive session tonight. One is a real, real property purchase, another one, it would be to discuss some pending litigation. So I will need a motion, a second, and then a majority roll call vote to go into executive session.
So moved.
Mr. President, I do have a question, point of order. I just wanted to ask, were there other people that did sign up to address City Council this evening?
No.
Okay.
I wouldn't have ignored them.
Okay. Thank you.
You make me look bad?
Just asking.
Only if you'd have ignored them or whatever.
Yeah, no, they, they had signed up and the two people that signed up are the people that spoke tonight, so that was more appropriate to have them speak during the legislative portion, so. That being said, and having been interrupted here, I think Mr.
Mr. Ansel.
Ansel had made a motion to go into executive session for discussion of property purchase and pending litigation. Is there?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the rule on the motion to go into executive session, please?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay. We will go off the record at the moment, go into executive session. Need a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Silvestri, second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the rule on coming out of executive session?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
All right. We are now back on the record on this August 19th, 2019, having come out of executive session. And this is our miscellaneous portion, so I'm going to just start with first ward and work our way down to our council at large. So Mr. Cavan?
Thank you. I, they're gone now, but I wanted to thank the folks from the transportation, the transit system that showed up to speak to enlighten us on some of the things that they're doing, some of the things that are really, really helping our citizenry out. But hopefully we'll see them again soon and I'll have the opportunity. Other than that, I'm, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Warden?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to commend the folks that came out who utilized the city transportation pass program, the subsidized program. It's great to see that growth really exponentially increase and it's great to hear that it's going for the purposes that we find most valuable, such as getting to and from work. So I'm grateful that those that need those services are utilizing that program. Also, I do want to thank members of my ward specifically, who I know there's been some drainage issues up there and there is a proposed development. And I want to thank them for coming in person and dropping off their concerns to members of council. I just want to say publicly, it's my understanding, because of that, that development is within the bounds of what is allowed and there's no variances or no conditional uses being sought or any, anything along those lines, that that is not on track to, to ever come before this body, but I want to thank them for making their concerns known. Thanks.
Mr. Myers?
No, thank you. I just want to remind everybody, we're going to have a committee meeting on September 3rd to talk about the Buckeye Street Neighborhood Successful Program that they put together and just basically have an open conversation with those folks as to how that's gone for them. I have had an opportunity, I don't play a great deal of golf anymore, but I did get an opportunity to play in the Friends of 180 Golf Outing recently, as well as the Boys and Girls Club Golf Outing. And in the Boys and Girls Club Golf Outing, our own Roger Kobelarsik was in my group and I will note that he's an outstanding golfer. It was a lot of fun to play with him, see him outside of professional work, but he's a very good golfer and a very, very enjoyable day, so, thank you.
Nothing to add, Mr. President?
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add, Mr. President?
Mr. Bostancic?[1791.15]